Okay, Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Kressel.
Here.
Platt.
Here.
Vedbrun.
Here.
Melby.
Here.
Jerdy.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Cavalier.
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. Does anyone wish to address council and any issue not already on tonight's agenda may come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Anything from Chad?
No, Your Honor, the phone bridge is empty.
Thank you. Hearing.
Agent logged off.
Hearing none, we'll move on. We have a presentation tonight. It's hope I pronounce this right. Stephanie Okry?
Yeah.
Perfect. She's gonna talk about childcare at Washington School. Thank you.
Well, my name is Stephanie Okry. I live in Shelley, Minnesota. I have a current childcare center in Grand Forks. I opened up in 2018, August 20th. Been there. We have 73 students, or children, I should say, not students. I have my BS in elementary ed. I have my masters and my PhD in early childhood and family science in both of them. Some people ask why I'm in early childhood childcare center when I have so many, so much education is because, for one, I love children. For two, I cannot teach college students. Found that out. So, and it came to me, one of my parents that drives from Crexton to Grand Forks, back to Crexton again for work, for childcare, and also my daughter rents one of the Summer Fields in Shelley, and manager there said that there's such a shortage here also. Some people were bringing their kids to school, or work with them. Excuse me, work with them. So, and then Carrie Olson, she was my licensure, and she's like, yes, Crexton is a huge shortage for childcare centers. So, here I am. I've been approached by Amy and a couple other people from the community, and I'm for whatever you guys need. I do currently still have my childcare in Grand Forks, but I will be splitting myself. Right now, too, I also have an assistant there, so when I'm not there, there is somebody there. I am working with the state already, but like we all know, state can be difficult. Our initial plan was to open on September 1st, right before school starts. But my licensure's coming from Minneapolis, which doesn't make sense to me, but we need somebody closer. But she said it could take a few while, or a little bit, because the state is backed up. So, but all the paperwork, the fees, the background check, all that stuff's good to go. They said, too, in having it being in a school, then the fire marshal and all those inspections and stuff should be quite quick. So hopefully it goes quicker than later. So that's us. Or me, I should say. So, but any questions or anything? I'm here for the community. I'm here for families. I'm here for whatever Crexton needs, because I'm hearing from a lot that we need a childcare center here, so.
I think this is a great start, so thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, and if there's anything, like Amy has my information. Superintendent has my information, so, you know, anything that I can do for the community, I'm here to work with everybody. So, to try to get the needs met. We will be collaborating with the school, like, on lunches and stuff like that, so we'll be also taking childcare assistance. I have put an application in for that, so families have that to have in their back. Food program. I've written a couple grants for equipment and all that good stuff, so it's a role. It's just Minneapolis has turned out to get it moving quicker, so. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Your Honor, if I could just add a couple things. Stephanie was interested in coming to Crexton and has considered a few options as far as facilities, but expressed to us her interests were school, nursing home, and okay, as priorities, they're a little bit easier to get licensing for. And in a subsequent conversation with the superintendent, we were kind of discussing available rooms. So they do have two rooms that I think Stephanie, you're gonna be able to make into four spaces. So her focus will be on infant and toddler, since there is a preschool already at Washington School. And as things progress, a lease will be arranged between Stephanie and the school district. And likely at some point, we may bring to you the city council possibly a proposal to help extend a sidewalk as our, as our contribution from the separate entrance over to the parking lot. Those types of things to help so parents aren't trudging through grass on the school district. And Stephanie and us have talked a little bit about snow removal and how all that works out. So we are working through those details, but I'm really excited that Stephanie wants to be here in town and providing a service to our families. So thank you, and thank you for coming to two meetings tonight. She was at school board earlier, so thank you for coming. And as Stephanie mentioned, I do have her contact information. If you ever have any questions or want more information, we can certainly facilitate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. All right, moving on. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Don is our second by Clayton. Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Kressel.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Vedbrun. Vedbrun.
Aye.
Melby.
Can you hear me?
Aye.
Yes.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please? Whoops.
We needed a.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Second by Wayne. Kind of jumping the gun here. Now I'll ask for roll call.
Kressel.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Vedbrun.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, no public hearings. This brings us to the regular agenda. Ashley?
Yes, Your Honor. I just wanted to relay the message that I have attached an updated resolution to approve the rental rehabilitation loan program deferred loan repayment agreement and mortgage. The revised agreement is omitting that of Noel Nelson's. And instead, the timeline was elapsed per her resolution. So if we could have a motion to approve that. The revised resolution, Your Honor.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the revised resolution?
I make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Delane is our second.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton? Any discussion?
Your Honor, I will just make a brief statement. This item 8.01 and I think there's three more that we'll see tonight are some cleanup items. These were loans that the city made. The loans are satisfied either by the time elapsing or repayment, and we need to file the mortgage satisfaction to release that lien on the property. So you'll see two, two other ones of those, and then we'll later have a resolution to clean up a sale of property or ratify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Kressel.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Vedbrun.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Your Honor, 8.02 is a resolution to approve the commercial rehabilitation loan program deferred loan repayment agreement and mortgage for Noel Nelson.
Motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Second.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Don. Thank you. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Kressel.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Vedbrun.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
8.03 is a resolution to approve, approve the intermediary relending program IRP loan repayment agreement and mortgage with TJC Incorporated, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, second.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Christie. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Kressel.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Vedbrun.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Item 8.04 is a resolution to approve the school resource officer service agreement between the independent school district 593 and the city of Crexton, Your Honor.
All right, can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
What do I got here?
Second.
Oh, and Steve. Okay, thank you. Discussion.
How long of a term is it?
I think it's one year. That was in your packet here.
You read the resolution, it's in there.
I thought it said it was longer than that.
Your Honor, on the last page, page six of six of the agreement, it is through June 30th of 2024, beginning July 1 of this year.
Okay, thank you. That's a cost share with the school.
This, this agreement allows us, and it's been reviewed by both the school district and city staff, allows us to provide a school resource officer at the school, which it does help both the school, having that officer there for our students, as well as it keeps our patrol officers from having to come off of their regular routes, those types of things. And it does have, if you will notice on page, let me flip to it, four of six of the agreement, there are some estimated reimbursements back to the city.
Okay.
For that.
Thank you.
Mayor, is there any, is there any grants available for this anymore? Because there used to be at one time.
Councilmember, I, I'm not aware of that. The cost would be borne by the school district on that, so I'm not sure if they have sought out grants. Jeremy Olson is shaking his head no. So I'm not sure. And Chief Biermeyer is standing up in the back.
When we first looked at this, we talked about, when we first looked at this, we a cops grant, we did not get that. Program is in place, we cannot apply for that grant now after the fact, so that's why we've just continued with. Both parties.
I think it's a great arrangement. It's good to have a resource officer up to school, and I'm sure Jeremy appreciates it, and parents, so. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kressel.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Vedbrun.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Your Honor, 8.05 is a resolution authorizing and/or ratifying the sale or dissolve of real property Lot 6, Block 4 of Evergreen Estates subdivision.
Motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Don, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clayton. Discussion.
Your Honor, I will make a brief statement. This was one of the items I mentioned under our first regular agenda item. This was property sold in 1998. We realized, and it was discovered, that some of the items were not recorded with the county. So this process we're doing today is just to ratify that sale and allow us to properly record documents.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kressel.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Vedbrun.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Your Honor, 8.06 is a resolution calling a public hearing for the wellhead protection plan.
Motion to approve this resolution.
I make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Steve. Second by Delane. Discussion.
Your Honor. Brandon, if, if you need to jump in at any point to steer me in the right direction, but we have had a recent public hearing on the wellhead protection plan. We did receive some comments from the DNR after the date that we would like to address, and there was also a publication date error, and we just want to really make sure that we have that correct. I think it's, is it Department of Health that is? Yes?
Yeah, the Department of Health.
Yeah, so for them, we need to be able to provide the documentation and the publication notice. This also allows us to address the DNR comments, so. Tonight, we're just asking you to set the time date and place of that public hearing.
And when would that public hearing be?
Three weeks. It is is it the next one? One moment, Your Honor. I will just look right at that on the resolution.
It's on here.
Yes.
I don't.
July 26th, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yes.
Could've read a little deeper. Any further discussion? Motion. Roll call, please.
Kressel.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Vedbrun.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Your Honor, 8.07 is Crexton Housing and Economic Development Authority, CETA, board members to address the city council regarding amendment to enabling resolution. Reminder, up to 30 minutes is allotted for this agenda item.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don. Second.
This isn't a resolution.
This isn't a resolution.
It's not?
No. This isn't. So we don't need a first or second.
We don't need a first or second. So I guess it's open to any CETA board members that would like to speak.
Kurt Halstap, President of CETA. CETA has heard clearly the complaints of the council and citizens and take them seriously. Since last Tuesday, I've been unable to set a date for a CETA meeting to do a due diligence on formulating options with CETA board approval. At this time, I would request additional time to set such a meeting. I see no reason to rush this process.
Okay, moving on.
Your Honor, 8.08 is a resolution calling a public hearing on the questions of modifying the enabling resolutions concerning the Crexton Housing and that Economic Development Authority.
I'll make that.
Motion to approve this resolution.
Your Honor, I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Delane and Don, thank you. Discussion.
Your Honor.
We got, we got all of our stuff in order on this here. You know, we gotta, if we do this here, whole deal. You know, at that public hearing, I heard many times to slow down, do this right, all that kind of stuff. You know, if we gotta hire a new economic development person, if we've got to hire a housing authority person, what's all this gonna cost us and what's it gonna do? I think we gotta start getting our stuff in order before we.
To hear from your public, or from you, or CETA staff, or board member. And we discussed, I think, the timeline last time. If this item is not addressed this evening or approved this evening, and was on the next meeting, the earliest you would be able to hold a public hearing would be on July 26th. Just to understand that timeline. This particular resolution in front of you calls for a date of July 12th. For the July 12th meeting.
Mr. Halstap just asked for more time. Is that something that we need to discuss a little more as far as, will that be during the public forum portion of this, or do we need to talk about that a little bit?
I'm not sure I fully understood. I had spoken to Mr. Halstap this morning, and that's not quite what we spoke about. If more time is needed, I would need a little bit. I don't know if more time is needed for the CETA board.
That's what he was saying, right? Right, Kurt?
Yes. We find out a week ago options personally, other board members, I believe, will say the same. Didn't know options were on the table for us to bring forward. So now, reached up to a couple board members that can't find a date to have a CETA special meeting to discuss what options we can write up, and then have board approval of that city. And now with holidays, what do you like coming up? Hope they have something first part of next week. Reached up to a couple board members that maybe some days just don't have enough time.
So, I, and I, I appreciate that, Kurt, and I was hoping when you guys held your special meeting, what, two, two, three weeks ago now, I was hoping something would come from that meeting that you guys could bring to the board that might make some sense in saying, you know, this is, okay, we hear what everybody's saying. There, maybe there needs to be some changes, this is what we're proposing, but you guys went down a list and you posed everything that we're doing. So now I'm just wondering, at that meeting was a missed, maybe a missed opportunity for you guys to maybe say, okay, let's, let's start here. So am I, am I missing that, or?
The council of all tomatoes came after that meeting, so.
Okay. I, I hear you.
So, excuse me. Special board, we, we have a meeting to resolution 612021. As opposing city of Crexton calls dissolution of CETA. We responded to that only, we said, we're giving you information with this resolution on bike. We don't think it's a good idea. Also, for both of bikes. Wasn't the fifth one, it wasn't listed as an option, it's stated. Whereas, council's call for dissolution was abrupt. About mortgage. The city has non-syndical dialogue with CETA. But CETA would welcome the opportunity to address any of council's concerns about CETA. Is that an option? I believe it is. But, after we passed the resolution, we come to the meeting where you had four options. Do you remember what the first option was? You don't remember what the first option is?
What, what's first option of our, of our options?
Of your options.
Yes.
Okay. That no longer, I believe, just stating my opinion now, is no longer a thought process for an option. So, our resolution stopped that. That's what we, as the board, said, we gotta put a stop to that. Option, visit with us. That hasn't occurred. So now, after hearing what's going on in the community, I gotta get my board together and say, they now have options. Can I meet? And I gotta make sure I have a quorum of my board members, have some options available, how we think CETA can move forward, get it approved by my board, and then I can bring it here to visit with the council. I haven't had time to do that.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, but you know, this isn't the first time that we've been down this road. I mean, so I mean, after the first time that we had, I mean, would, would that have probably possible? Was that a missed opportunity back when we lost the previous city administrator, and then when we, you know, lost America during those situations? Was that maybe an opportunity to say, okay, hey, if something's not working? City has tried this, we haven't tried anything yet to this point. Was that maybe an opportunity that you could have said, let, let's, we gotta figure something else out?
You're saying because you lost the city administrator in the second one?
There were, there were, they were struggling with working with CETA.
Say that again.
They were struggling with working with CETA.
Your hindsight's 100%.
Okay.
Possibly.
Thanks.
That's my, my personal response, okay? Talking for myself.
You have a plan here next week to try to get the board together, correct?
Somebody was talking, I didn't.
So do you have a plan to get the board together next week?
I made calls, got it down to about one date. Timeframe is still debatable. Most of my board has responded. Yeah, all but one. I haven't got ahold of that person yet. Don't rush.
Well, I guess, too, you know, a year ago, and had a joint council, CETA meeting, so, you know, we, I think council was trying and willing to work with the CETA board, and we heard nothing from your board. I mean, while your comment is, is that sit down and try to work out our differences. Didn't we try to do that a year ago?
Are you speaking about the one on?
Correct.
High school? We didn't know what to expect, Dale. No agenda.
I asked you to sit down and do an agenda with me.
Before the meeting?
Before the meeting.
Then I will, I will refute that. I do not remember you calling me about an agenda.
It was after a CETA meeting.
I asked you to make up an agenda. I never saw it.
I said, let's do, let's do a co-agenda.
And did you ever call me to meet on it?
You said you would get in touch with me, and you never did.
I'm sorry, I don't believe I said that.
Your Honor, we have a first and a second on this.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
So what are we gonna do, though? Is this something that we're gonna?
All we're asking for is a public hearing.
Just the vote, the vote comes next on the resolution, and it will either be voted up or down to call the public hearing.
Roll call, please.
Kressel.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Vedbrun.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Nick.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on.
Item 8.09 is a resolution to approve the Minnesota Department of Transportation, MINDOT, corridor study consultant selection.
I have a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton.
I'll second.
Second by Christie. Discussion. I think we need a little information from.
Yes.
You know, Pat at one of the meetings said that we could take the blocks out and cement the centers and call it maintenance. You know, I haven't really ever heard anybody to say that they want two lanes, a bike path, and all that stuff. They feel even where they are, but we always heard that we couldn't do anything with the sidewalks because they're, it wouldn't be easily accessible.
Councilmember? I'm sorry. This, this study would develop the alternatives, I believe, three alternatives for the city council to have final approval on. The study is just to determine and work through what those recommendations for alternatives will be. And this today is.
But that's sixty, it says $60,000 to do this study. Why don't we take that $60,000 and replace that sidewalks? Put it toward replacing the sidewalks.
Councilmember Vedbrun, the council has already agreed to enter into a joint powers agreement with MINDOT. And what we're discussing tonight is that consultant selection and what the city share would be. We had previously discussed $50,000, and I will, I will explain this a little bit more in depth when we get to the presentation part.
That's what I mean. It was for $50,000, and now it's more. So that's where I guess my fault is. I think we should just let MINDOT do what they want to do to their, their portion of it and fix our sidewalks. to do to their portion of it and fix our sidewalks.
Okay.
Without, correct me if I'm wrong, but without a corridor study, MinDOT is not gonna come in and fix sidewalks. Or, basically, if MinDOT wasn't gonna do nothing, all they were gonna do is change the traffic signal signs downtown.
Yep.
That was it.
Your Honor, this, and I'll ask Chad here in a moment if he would put the map up. It might, I know it's been a little while since we've talked about it, but council did approve. It's a little bit hard to see, but the blue, the blue blocks, I believe, there's about six to six and a half blocks that are considered local blocks. That's where our share comes in. The yellow is the MinDOT corridor study. So this part actually has been approved and moved forward by council. We are just discussing tonight the consultant selection, and I do have a few things I'm gonna need to present to you, so you have a good understanding before you make your decision.
Thank you.
Can I also just confirm that there is a rather sizable dollar amount that the ADA is giving us in order to improve the sidewalks?
Yes.
And without this corridor study, that's gone.
Right. The study must be done in order to develop the alternatives. The decisions that were before you, prior, were, if you wanted to in fact include the local city blocks, and the vote was yes on that, and then if we were committing to entering into a joint powers agreement with MinDOT, their initial contribution was going to be a hundred thousand dollars. And I will be getting to that in a minute, but I don't wanna get ahead. Chad, is Matt Upgrin on, do you know yet?
I'm here. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can. Matt, I'm just gonna go through the, some of the bid details, and then if you need to jump in at any point, or for questions, Matt Upgrin is available with us tonight by Zoom. What I wanna start with, if I may, is we did receive three bids for the corridor study consultant selection. Two of those bids actually came in above what our estimated cost would be. So if you'll remember, based on MinDOT's estimation of their yellow blocks, if you will, being around a hundred thousand, we estimated ours would be about fifty. One of the bids came in less than that. MinDOT also encouraged the city, and we support this approach, is to strongly consider experience. Experience with corridor studies, we have a unique situation, and there's certain elements of our corridor study that are, we wanna make sure we have that expertise and that strong background to really address those vital components of our corridor study. We have sidewalks, we have traffic, we have lighting. We are recommending to you, SRF, as the consultant. So their bid did come in at two hundred three, nine seventy, forty-five. That is high. That's higher than we expected. So based on our initial estimation, that would have left the city with a hundred and three, right? Based on their experience and their proposal, they have a strong background in corridor studies. They've worked with MinDOT. They also provided the most robust project team in their proposal of about fifteen people, and it included things like a signal and lighting specialist. That is gonna be important and a vital aspect of our corridor study. They have safety. They have, I've got the bids here in front of me, but based on the city's review, we consulted with our city engineer, and we also consulted with MinDOT staff. MinDOT was able to go back and get authorization to actually cover two-thirds of that bid. So that is up. Our share becomes approximately sixty-eight thousand. So the remainder of that actually would be covered by MinDOT. So we do understand this is above what we initially discussed. We do believe that this is the best consultant to select based on experience, and with MinDOT's authorization for additional contribution, it makes this a more feasible option for us to consider.
So it's like eighteen thousand dollars over what we thought it was gonna be?
That's right. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we're getting more bang for our buck with this particular.
That's true. I believe after there, after reviewing the proposals, this team that's proposed would really provide more support. And if you'll remember, part of the scope is a community review panel. So this, any consultant selected will be expected to also join those community review panel teams. We've started some initial discussions on how we're gonna begin developing that. This has a, they have a really large team to help support these efforts that we feel like would give us the most successful approach to this project and the very best alternatives to be developed for your consideration, for our unique corridor study and some of the aspects that we think are gonna be really important through that.
With this study, then, well, I know one time they were talking about, you know, putting cones up or putting markers up, or whatever, so the people could see how it's gonna be. Would that include that, too?
This is Matt Upgrin here, project manager with MinDOT, if I may jump in. So the corridor study itself doesn't specifically, or the scope of work, doesn't specifically direct the city or the consultant or MinDOT to erect those, the cones you're speaking about, we call them a demonstration project, but that's certainly an option on the table. If through the process of working with the community review panel, developing the alternatives, if the desire by the city is to have a demonstration project done, that's on the table. They do cost money. I think MinDOT would typically cover that, but something we could discuss. And I, at this time, it's premature to decide where we would do it and how and on what block it. We need to get into the study to figure that out. But that's certainly an option on the table. Yeah, we discussed that with you guys at a prior council meeting, so.
That's why I brought it up, because I know we talked about.
Yep. We mentioned that. And we, I think we're doing a couple in other communities right now, but, yeah, certainly an option on the table.
Thank you. So, just to confirm, so basically with this study, we're gonna have three alternatives to kind of see what we think would best fit for the city, correct?
Yes.
In that process of making those decisions, we'll get a lot of public input?
Yes.
And have very specific constituent groups that come through and work with that, those particular individuals, to create those three opportunities or options for us to decide ultimately. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
And that's, we talked about like a trial run for so many months with MinDOT back before. They said they could do.
Something for a little while. Is that correct, Matt?
Well, yeah, I think that's kind of getting back to Tom's question about the demonstration project. Same thing there, so.
But I think, wasn't that kind of brought up before we decided to go with a MinDOT corridor study?
That was.
I think that was before my time. I don't remember that conversation.
It was brought up to do some kind of trial, I believe. It was, they were talking even this summer yet.
But I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. I think we get to the corridor study and let them do their homework, we do our homework on this, and see what the best route to go with this.
Then when that, what you're saying is then when that comes about, that the one they choose, we do a trial on that to see if that works, or?
I don't know how the game plan is.
I think that would be part of the discussions and the development. Matt, you can chime in if I'm incorrect about that, but I think that would be one of the discussions we would then have with, with MinDOT and the consultant.
Yeah, I mean, it's, how can you fully replicate, depending on what the alternative is, I think through a demonstration project, we could try to replicate that scenario in an isolated location, right? So not the entire way through town. So I guess, we're telling you that we would make the demonstration projects on the table. Yeah, I guess I'm not privy to conversations before this fall. If, I think there were other staff working with you guys a couple of years ago, but I guess I will just add that we think SRF is a very strong candidate. Not to speak ill of any of the candidates that submitted for RFP, but SRF is a strong candidate. We can say that. And we would wholeheartedly support going with that deepest resume. We've made a commitment to raise our, or cover our two-thirds, that higher amount. We think it's that important. I know it's, it's easy to spend other people's money when it's not yours, right? But it is important that we get this right in the community, because the alternatives that are developed in this report, should the council vote to proceed with the preferred alternative, that's gonna have a lasting impact. That's an document that MinDOT will go to and look to in our scoping process for future work in Crookston. And it's important we get it right, and with a candidate that has a deep traffic understanding. So it's more than just sidewalks, right? It's operation of the signals and, and timing and the whole, the geometric layout of the whole corridor, so.
I will say, I've had a couple constituents in the past couple of weeks talk to me about really the importance of the safety of our downtown. I think that, you know, having that citizen input is gonna be so important. I think that what I've been seeing is on mom pages, where kids have been darting out into the middle of Highway Two, and like, people, like, literally almost went under a car. And I think that this is so important for us to have the best possible options, and really look at that as we go forward. And I hope that we can find an alternative that satisfies the needs of this community. But I think that's, that's one aspect of it. I think I've also heard from some of our older citizens who've been very concerned about parking in the downtown and being in the downtown, especially in the wintertime, when they're trying to be in a parallel parking spot and possibly slipping on ice, and you're right out into the street. And so I think this is gonna be a welcome opportunity for a lot of our citizens going forward, and I'm excited to see what we have to offer.
Matt, did you see that the SRF has the best RFP for this project?
I personally have not looked through them. I'm speaking from the information provided by Amy, but Amy did a good job summarizing kind of those candidates. This would be an agreement between yourself, the city, and SRF, so it's your consult, it's not MinDOT's, right? But we have an agreement with you guys, or will have one, when the joint powers agreement is complete. So it's ultimately the city's decision, and they will be directly reporting to you for invoicing, things like that. But all three of our entities are gonna be working together to make the corridor study happen, so.
Thank you.
Part of the study, did Amy, did we discuss whether it's gonna be them, or you, or your team, to look into Foston, Bagley, where they've already been, into that corridor, that we've done, the cities there?
Do you mean, MinDOT or the consultant?
I can't remember if we discussed, I just kind of wanna get on the record, so we can make sure we look into that, because I know Foston had a big issue, or Bagley had a big issue with it. Foston went okay. You can probably relate to how they went down the corridor here, but I know I like to get their input from these other cities, too. Let me get a note on that, but, because there was some problems in some towns, and some towns it worked out well. But I just kind of think that would be a good place to make sure we get that, whether it's in the study, or we do it ourselves, or however that works.
See, can I ask you, you know, if it was with the person that was doing the study, if it was the person that they created the, that actually was doing the work? Was it just the input from the city?
I think the citizens and the council, I think he can probably, thank me.
Matt, do you have more information on?
Probably, because I think he's the one that brought that up, I believe.
Sure.
Yeah, I think I understand the question, maybe not. You're just, you just wanna get sort of, kind of anecdotal feedback from the community of Foston and Bagley, right? Based on how their experience went. I will say, I personally worked in Foston. Their council did vote to approve a re-stripe of their community. And so they, they adopted the preferred alternative, the outcome of their corridor study. They adopted that, and were proceeding in that direction in Foston. Now, in Bagley, they elected, their council elected not to adopt the preferred alternative, and it ended right there. So as of today, Bagley's a four lane, and that's the way it's gonna stay, you know, for the foreseeable future, right? Until another major pavement project comes through, you know, you could have a discussion again. But for twenty-plus years anyways. And that's the other point that I wanna reinforce, and Amy, you mentioned it again tonight, but this corridor study is not, you guys agreeing to any changes to Crookston. You know, you, the council will have that final say. When the report is complete, the consultant will prepare that preferred alternative out of the three, the one that they feel, with the feedback of the community review panel and working hand in hand with them and the city leaders, what that preferred alternative will be. And then at that point, you guys will have an opportunity to vote to adopt that or not. Legally, MinDOT cannot change access. We can't increase it or decrease it in a city without the city's permission and approval. So there's, that's monumented in state statute. So we can't make any changes, even if we wanted to, to Crookston, if it were to add a lane or reduce a lane, without the city's permission. So we don't wanna operate that anyway, that way anyways, you know, operating alone or separate from the city. That's why we wanna, that's why we're pushing for this study. It's an opportunity for everyone to really get their thoughts out on the table. It's, it'll be about a year-long process. We need the city's permission anyways, so if we were to make any changes, it has to come from you, and it has to be driven by the city. If the city doesn't want it, we're not gonna do it, just like what happened in Bagley. It was voted down, and that was the end of it. But we do encourage, back, I kind of got off topic there, back to the question, we highly encourage you to speak with the other communities, and we think that that's due diligence that should happen, and hear from them, how their, how did their experience go? I mean, I, if you ask me, I'm gonna say we did our doggone best in Foston, you know, to hear, to make sure everybody was heard. But I may have a biased opinion, being I worked for the state and I was involved. So I encourage you to, on your own, speak with them and hear from them. I, I trust you'll hear overall positive remarks from Foston, I really think so. At the end of the day, it's, you're never gonna please everybody, right? There are folks that don't want changes, there are folks that do want changes, and the goal of that study is to bring all those voices together into one location and kick it around the table and come up with a decision that's ultimately best for the community. And like I said before, I mean, that's, that's where we rely on you, the elected leaders, that you're gonna have a big decision to make. It's a, it's a tough decision, you know, the potential for a big change, I don't know. We'll see what the preferred alternative is, but that's where the constituents are relying on you, the folks they've elected to make that decision, so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I may, I just, I just wanna circle back. So the decision that we're asking of you this evening is to select the consultant, which is the starting point of developing and conducting that study. As a reminder, this, the bid did come in higher than what we expected. MinDOT has increased their contribution to cover two-thirds, leaving us with approximately sixty-eight thousand in city share. We'd initially discussed utilizing the general fund reserves to pay for the fifty thousand that we estimated. The general fund reserves can easily support the sixty-eight thousand. It's important to me and to us as a city, and hopefully to you as council members, we gotta do this right the first time. And I think a careful selection of a consultant that can give us the very best alternatives to consider, if one of those is a, is an alternative that you would wish to vote forward, is really critical to this process.
Thank you, Amy. Any further discussion? Tom?
Amy, you said this is all coming out of the general fund, then?
Councilmember Ben Bratton, that is what we discussed initially, that our share would come from general fund reserves. And I do, I feel very comfortable that general fund reserves can also support this sixty-eight thousand dollar share.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Ben Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, moving on. Reports and staff. Amy.
Thank you, everyone, for hanging in through that meeting. We got a lot of work done tonight, a lot of cleanup work. I'm also really excited that we got to introduce Stephanie to the community, both at the school board meeting and here tonight in front of you. I think, I think Crookston should feel really blessed that she wants to bring her experience here. She's been a really cooperative and engaging partner in discussing some of those terms with the school district, and wants to offer the very best care for children, focusing on infant and toddlers at the most reasonable rate possible. She will be offering, I think, as she said, the food program, so I think that's really exciting. And with the schools' cooperation and the school board and Jeremy. cooperation and the school board and Jeremy able to get that started as close to school starting as the licenser will allow. Yes, sir.
Did she say how the numbers of kids? I guess I heard, did I miss it?
Oh, gosh. She did.
Jeremy, did she say it?
She reported at school board.
Yes, it was twenty-two.
Okay.
Twenty-two?
Yep. So she'll be able to split, um, there's two classrooms available. She'll be able to split each one into two sections. I don't remember if she announced it here, but she does in her infant room, kind of a non-mobile infant, and then she has a section for the mobile infant.
Is there, um, has there been a, um, a study on what the, what the total need of childcare? Is there a number out there for the total needs for this community?
I think we could work through Tri Valley, probably our, over there, our partners and get that information. What we do know is the waiting lists that exist right now are infant and toddler. And so that's what we really asked her to focus on, if she was willing to come and do that. So we could start alleviating some of that need in that area with the hope of future growth as the school makes future decisions and does some long-term planning, that if more space becomes available, Stephanie is willing to grow into that space and be able to expand those, those services that she offers.
I think it's pretty great, being a mom who had an infant here, you know, gosh, five years ago now, but still an issue, driving to Fisher every day for, for six months. And then just by, I think, the grace of God, to be honest, that we were able to get into somewhere in Crookston. You know, I think it allows a lot more mothers to be in the workforce. And I think we all know that there is quite the labor shortage as it is. And so this is exciting to, to provide this and I hope to see more.
Your honor, that was all I had.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Okay. Start with Chief Biermeyer.
Your honor, just to, uh, briefly to let you know that there are, technically with Officer Vasquez, um, I'm sure he's on patrol position.
We're technically, uh-
Full staff right now with regard to patrol.
Um, the application numbers are full.
As they are across the state, all departments.
We extended the deadline another three weeks. We're moving forward with the applications that are down.
And doing some preliminary background and some testing.
So we're, for the, some-
Thank you.
No report tonight, your honor.
Brandon?
No report tonight, your honor.
Welcome. Briggs?
No report tonight, your honor.
Nope. Chad?
Uh, no report, your honor.
Ryan here? Anybody from the fire hall? Okay, this will go around the table. Start with Christie tonight.
Um, we have a couple of things going on. Sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading my notes, so I apologize. Uh, I was trying to figure out who it was that did the wellness walk, but we have some really great maps now to do little mini walks for those who are in the downtown. And that was something that was supported by Polk County Wellness, the DCDP and CHIP. And so you can, there's maps to do fifteen, thirty and forty-five minute walks. And so I think there's a couple other council members and, and Amy was there. And it was really great to see that opportunity and for the people to be getting out in the downtown and, and walking around. So that was really exciting. At the last park meeting, we had a nomination for the, I believe it's the media booth at the Crookston Sports Center.
The press box, I believe.
Yeah, press box. That was brought forth by, I believe, Jake Fee and-
Scott Clevins.
Scott Clevins. And so that is passed as an N is in process now. Other than that, I think that's pretty much all I have. I know that we're in the process of hiring a new park and recs individual and that's been posted.
Yes, ma'am, that has been posted. We are leaving that open for first review through July eighth. We were unsure the level or amount of applications we've got. We have got quite a few in. I have not yet sat down. I kind of want to get to sit down and look at them all at once. Tina's managing those coming in through Indeed. There's been a lot through Indeed. We have a lot dropped off in paper surveys. So I've communicated with the park board, but as we get nearer to a selection process, we're going to have, on the interview panel, we will have park board representation and we'll be reaching out as we get a little bit closer to that to start narrowing these, those down. And hopefully we will have an applicant we want to bring forward to you for a recommendation.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Christie?
That is it.
Thank you. Steve, anything?
Um, crazy days, July fifteenth. I don't see anybody from the chamber here, but they didn't get a director sound like, so that's a positive thing. Uh, so, but yeah, it's crazy days. It's, uh, their board put it together and it's going to happen on July fifteenth. So support downtown Crookston.
All right, thank you. Clayton?
Nothing to report, your honor.
All right, thank you. Tom, anything?
Nope, nothing to report, your honor.
All right. Don? Oh, I want to thank the chief of police, Biermeyer, for taking care of some problems that we had up in our ward. So thank you very much for doing that. Quick, quick response by your officers and appreciate it.
That's what is the credit.
Yeah. Okay. Tell them then, please.
Joe? Yeah, just want to let everybody know that the north end welcome sign is now up. It looks very well. They are going to do landscaping next and work on the south end, but drove by it today after work and it looks beautiful. So it's a, it's a great, great deal for Crookston coming into town. Everybody can see it. And so if you get a chance, drive by it and look at it.
Joe, I will say, it is wonderful. So please thank everybody for-
Yeah, I, I was surprised how well it looked today. You know, I've been looking at the backdrop for, since last week and I didn't, wasn't really realizing it. And I drive by there every day, so I kind of forget to even peek over there. But today I drove by after work and I'm like, oh, wow, that looks nice.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Catches your eye for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen a picture of it. Jess showed it to me at the school board meeting. It looks really, really nice.
Yep.
Very modern and inviting and cool and it will-
But not too, but not too much. It draws your eye, but it's just-
Classy.
Yep.
I want to drive by in person and see.
That's all, your honor.
Thank you. Delane, anything?
Uh, nothing tonight, your honor.
Thank you. Wayne?
Remember, it's dry out there. Careful with those fireworks.
They're, they're illegal.
No, no. Mr. Mayor, you can buy them at Walmart. There are certain ones that are legal. Just to let you know.
They can't go boom in the air though.
I didn't say they had to. Them sparklers.
I mean, they'll still like-
The sparklers and all that stuff.
All right. Got you. Thank you. Um, I, I gave a kind of a hats off to Scott at Park Board, but I want to give him a hats off here to the froth people that go down and do the froth thing. They are excited that the baskets are back up in Central Park. Seems like they got a good league going, about sixteen. So they're kind of rotating between Castle and Central Park. And so they're excited. Thank you, Scott. Also, I'd like to thank especially Jeremy and Stephanie and Amy for putting this together with the daycare issue. Great work. Thank you very much. That's all I got. Uh, there's no ways and means tonight. Nothing else to be done before council. We are adjourned. Thank you.